Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for being here and joining us for this public hearing. This is the first of two public hearings today on the draft of our 2021 annual action plan. If you're attending this one, there's no need to attend the one later tonight at 6:00 PM. They're going to be virtually the same, and we will publish the Q and A from both sessions on our website within a couple of business days so that everyone can see what input has come in. So today, there are two hosts. There's me, Catherine Duarte, Senior Analyst at the Community Development Division, and Barb Van Hooy.
Hello.
So she's going to start us off.
All right. Welcome, everyone. And we wanted to just quickly do a reminder of some of the etiquette for the meeting. Everyone will be muted. There is a text Q and A box, so please do use that. We will pause to take questions, but you can submit questions at any time, and Catherine or I will be monitoring those. There are captions in various languages. So at the bottom right hand of your screen, you should be able to find, if you're on a desktop, you should be able to find a little gear and select captions in different languages. We will be sharing these slides online after the presentation, and we will have a dedicated question and answer time at the end. But again, feel free to put questions in at any time. And we wanted to go over the agenda quickly. So introductions, myself and Catherine. We will be going through, we're going to start with describing the 2020 community survey results that we did as part of the planning for the 2021 action plan. And then Catherine will be going through the role of the action plan, how to read it. It's a big federal document, so it can use a little bit of explanation, talking about where the money goes. How does our public input influence the plan? We'll talk about next steps. And again, have Q and A. We definitely want to hear from you and have your questions throughout, so please don't hesitate to ask questions. So we wanted to start off the meeting just by getting a sense of who is here. So this is a neighborhood roll call. Please use the question and answer box in Teams. You should be able to find it in a menu somewhere around on your screen. And tell us where you live and/or who you're representing if you're with an organization. You could give us your zip code, a neighborhood name, or an organization. And we'd love to just get a sense of who else here.
We ask this, it's important for us to share that these funds impact the whole city and that they're not necessarily just for one neighborhood or another. They are designed for low-income communities, and that pretty much covers our whole city. Whether you qualify for a service or if you live in a neighborhood where a project might be happening, these funds truly impact the whole city. So we really love hearing who you represent, where you represent, and where we're engaging the most residents. So thanks for humoring us.
All right, we've got a couple, including one of our community development staff. And hi, Jessie, thanks for the shout out, 80910. We've got an 80903 downtown.
And thank you to our colleagues who are joining us.
All right, we've got Better in Support, Family Promise, Julie. Yay, hello, everybody. It's great to get a little sense of folks who are here. All right, well, please continue to add your roll call, who you are, where you're from, whatever information you are comfortable sharing. And I'm going to go ahead and start talking about our survey. So this is part of an annual process. Every year, the city's Community Development Division updates our plan for the funds that we receive from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. And in order to ensure that we are using those funds most effectively, we really need to get direct resident input about their resident's experiences and their community needs. So obviously, very much has changed in the last year since we, and also since we did an in-depth needs assessment that the division did as part of our five-year consolidated planning. And so we decided at the end of 2020 to field a survey to hear directly from residents about what you're experiencing now and what kind of priorities folks have for our community. So we advertised the survey with the provocative question, "What would you do with $5 million to help your community?" The $5 million is about the annual allocation that we receive through HUD. And the survey had six questions, and our responses were accepted online and by text over about a three-week period between November 20th and December 11th. And we received 1,277 responses. So we had about 1,161 people who answered that first question, "What would you do with $5 million to help your community?" And this word cloud gives a really great representation of what kind of priorities and topics were mentioned and how often. So you can see the biggest words were mentioned the most. So the staff took these answers, and we coded them based on major themes and put them into a chart. So as you can see, the individual themes that were mentioned the most, homeless, housing, jobs, and business, definitely not surprising, and also very much track with what the Community Development Division is focusing on. And then that other category, which is kind of big, that included several different things that you could sort of evenly divide between infrastructure and neighborhood services. So that included things like transportation, sidewalks, bike lanes, internet. And then the other half, you could describe as enrichment services, such as the arts, museums, and youth activities. So also, the percentages here are based on a number of people who mentioned each priority. So someone might have mentioned one, or they might have mentioned, you know, 15, a lot of them. A couple of things that we noted out of this. One of them is that the responses from our residents were really thoughtful. Really, people put a lot of time and effort into thinking what they thought was important. And also that it tracked pretty well with what kinds of priorities we're able to support. So that was really great. So we asked five other questions as part of the survey, and those focused on employment and housing stability. And we chose them because they reflect the U.S. Census Bureau's Household Pulse Survey. So this is a survey that started in March that is meant to provide a weekly and very quick data snapshot of how people's lives are being affected by the coronavirus pandemic. So this chart shows you of the folks who responded to our survey, 70% of them were homeowners. And it's important to note, this kind of illustrates that our survey is not a representative sample. It was just whoever decided to respond. And so as it turns out, in Colorado Springs, the split between owners and renters is almost 50/50%. So this survey was more heavily weighted toward owners. Keep that in mind. All right, so here are the income questions. Of the people who responded to our survey, 44% said that they had lost employment income since COVID, since the COVID shutdown began. And 28% said that they expect a loss of employment income in the next four weeks. And then around ability to pay next rent or mortgage on time. Of the respondents, 8% said that they were not at all confident, and 9% only slightly confident they would be able to pay either rent or mortgage. And those two numbers together come to 17%, which we can compare with the Household Pulse Survey for the state of Colorado, which found 8.6% of Coloradans were either not current on rent or mortgage payments, or they have a slight or no confidence that they can pay the next month's rent. So that means the respondents to our survey had a much higher incidence of being only slightly or not at all confident. And then we also asked about likelihood of being evicted or experiencing foreclosure. So this was the last question on our survey. And as you can see, the respondents, the responses show a clear disparity in the housing security between renters and owners, even though our survey is kind of heavily weighted toward ownership. So although less than 5% of owners said that it was somewhat or very likely that they would be foreclosed on, 24% of renters in our survey said that it was somewhat or very likely they would be evicted. So this kind of tracks with more housing insecurity for renters than owners, which is common. So those are the main survey questions. There's a lot more information about both the Census Bureau's Household Pulse Survey. Here is a link, and I can put that in the chat as well. There's also a lot more local data available on our website and the city's current housing plan, Home COS. And I'll paste that link as well. So all of this data, as well as a lot of other feedback consultations, are being considered as part of, or have been considered, in putting together the Draft 21 Action Plan. And basically, what we do is we take all of those regulations for how those funds can be spent, and we do our best to match that up with what our community's specific needs are and adjust the plan as we can every year. So next, Catherine Duarte is going to dive into the draft plan, but I do want to take just a second in case people have some questions about the survey. Catherine, did you see any?
No, it does not look like it. But I did want to remind everybody, the giant document that you see on our website, it's pretty large, over 100 pages, but over, almost half of it is the appendix. And we included the raw commentary, all, you know, over 1,000 comments of folks. So if anybody wants to read through all of those, we are going to play a little bit more with the category, the subcategories of other, just to dig a little deeper. But all of it is there for everyone to read, so just in case anybody's interested. But I don't see any questions. Feel free, as they come to you, to use the Q and A box, and we can address them as we go or at the end.
Great. Take it away, Catherine.
Great, thanks, Barb. So as I mentioned, or sorry, as Barb mentioned, all of this does get put into the action plan. First, I just wanted to give you some basics on what the action plan is and why we're asking for your input, why we come to you year after year for this. Basically, we are in a five-year planning framework as required by HUD. We're in the second year of our current five-year planning network, framework. The five-year plan is available on our website. It's a pretty sizable, substantial document that has a lot of research about market studies, the housing needs assessments, community needs assessments. And that really shapes the structure of what activities we use, under which programs. And then the annual action plan's role is to check in every year and see what needs updating. And it's a good thing that we do this because 2020 was a game-changing year for so many reasons. Part of the, an additional piece of the five-year planning framework is evaluation. So in a couple months, as we wrap up our 2020 program year, we're also going to be coming to you just with some facts and figures and some narratives about what we were able to accomplish in program year 2020. And then tying this all together is our Citizen Participation Plan, which guides our processes and procedures for coming to you all with any changes in plans, how to draft plans, proper noticing protocols, things like that. So if you ever have any questions, on the lower right-hand side of the screen, this is a screenshot from our website. You can view any one of our past plans or current plans, either in draft or final form, under the Reports and Maps section of our website. And then just a note on the format. We know it's really, it's not the most engaging read. As a requirement for HUD, every single question that they ask, you know, we don't really have a whole lot of say on how the report is formatted. So that's why we worked to create just a cheat sheet for you all. So when it comes to reading this, we prepared this kind of cheat sheet for what sections are the most relevant, depending on what you would like to know. And I like to think of this plan as a pretty even split between priorities, people, and product. Really, the front half of our plan is the narrative, the AP5, which is the executive summary and the parts about public participation and the consultations that will really give you a sense of what our priorities and needs are, how we went about asking the community to help us do a gut check, data sources we looked at, and strategies. And that can be the AP30 or 35/38. And the AP38 really is the heavy hitter. That really tells, that's pretty much the meat of the plan. And for the remainder of the presentation, we really focus on the AP38 and the AP15 because that's really about the money and the strategies. So and as far as productivity, we can, at this point in our program year, we do a lot of estimating. That's what the action plan is for. Obviously, we don't know what our subrecipients will be able to achieve, you know, during the program year, but it's a pretty good estimate based on previous years. So this is, if you want to attack this plan, this is pretty much the best way to figure out which sections apply to, you're most interested in learning about. So about that AP15, that's really sharing with you all of the money that we have to work with in this program year. So we don't know yet how much money we're going to receive from HUD. They announce it a couple months after the appropriations bill is finalized, which that happened at the end of December, so we'll know shortly. But this is what we submitted to the city during their 2021 budgeting process. And we're expecting about $5.3 million from HUD and expecting about $300,000 in program income. And on the side, it's just a little guide to what program, how those funds come in. We receive those funds through three main programs. CDBG, which is the biggest chunk. That's the oldest program and kind of HUD's signature program for entitlement communities. And that's very broad. It covers affordable housing, infrastructure, basic public services, job creation. Home is our main source of affordable housing funding. And that's really for new construction, rental payment, rental assistance, down payment assistance, direct housing services, basically, or housing production, I should say. And then ESG is our smallest program that tackles one of our biggest problems, which is homelessness. And that's specifically assistance for homeless service providers. And all beneficiaries have to be literally homeless or at risk of homelessness. So within the CDBG PIE, this is, again, in the AP38, you can read a lot more about how the funds are divvied up and what is planned for those different activities. So if CDBG is the program, all these different PIE slices, we call them projects. So just some highlights on the right-hand side here. The reason administration and public services are always 20% and 15%, respectively, is because that's the cap by law. And that's how all of our administration, this is how all of our salaries are paid. In public services, this is what funds all of the support that we provide to nonprofits for direct services to low-income communities. In this five-year planning period round, we started an economic development program. 5% of our CEVG allocation is going towards economic development. And for those of you who followed us in the 2020 program year, that was really meant for a program that we called CFIG. It was a kind of exterior improvements for businesses. However, in the wake of COVID, we've had to pivot a bit, and now all of that is going to direct assistance for microenterprises, which is your uber-small businesses, fewer than five or fewer employees. Next, we have Public Facilities and Infrastructure, which is a pretty large slice of the pie, just based on the nature of how expensive rehabbing public facilities and infrastructure projects can be. And then lastly, we have Affordable Housing, which is the biggest slice of the pie, just based on community feedback that we hear year after year, just that affordable housing is the biggest need. Under CDBG, affordable housing projects really have to do with rehab, renovation, things like that. When we talk about affordable housing as a two-pronged approach for preserving and creating, CDBG is really our bucket for preservation activities. So that's why we work with Brothers Redevelopment on homeowner rehabilitation, barrier removals, emergency repair for low-income homeowners. And we also work with the Housing Authority on rehabbing some of their units and their housing stock to make them accessible for their disabled clients. In the home program, we are expecting a little over $1.5 million. Again, we have some activities that are capped or made a minimum by law. So our admin costs are at 10%. The CHDO, or what we call CHODOs, are community housing development organizations. Those are basically local affordable housing developers who already kind of pre-qualified, pre-certified through us. And they create new multifamily or new homeownership activities. So under this activity, we are working with Pike's Peak Habitat for Humanity, and we're expecting that they will add three new homes for homeownership. In the pipeline for new multifamily construction, which is almost half of this PIE, we're expecting over 400 new affordable units to lease up just this program year. And again, this is not how much is in the pipeline at all stages. This is how many apartments will be, we expect to be done and have people moving into them by the end of the program year. Home also features our TBRA program called Tenant-Based Rental Assistance. And we work, again, with the Housing Authority on this program. And this year, with that money, we expect to bring 20 households out of homelessness and into permanent, stable housing. And then lastly, we have our Down Payment Assistance Program, where we partner with Rocky Mountain Community Land Trust. And they help low-income households become first-time homeowners. And this year, we expect 10 families to benefit from that program. Lastly, the program budget for ESG. This one rarely changes just because of how strict this program is regulated and is run. Again, we have caps, budget caps by law for administration, emergency shelter, and street outreach. That pretty much leaves the remainder for the other components, which is homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing. Again, the requirements to participating in this are fairly strict. Our subrecipients, in order to receive ESG funding, one, you have to serve people at risk of homelessness or literally homeless. You have to partner with the Pike's Peak Continuum of Care or our local COC. You have to use a common database, which we call HMIS, or Homeless Management Information Systems. And you have to participate in coordinated entry. It's really important. It's a policy goal of HUD that all communities work together with all their service providers, housing providers, healthcare providers, and make sure that we're all on the same page, that we understand that the only end to homelessness is housing. So the goal of these programs is either to keep or get people housed. So a lot of these funds go to case management, and it's a very people-intensive line of work. So case management, low-barrier policies, in order to get people out of shelter and quickly into housing is absolutely imperative.
Hey, Catherine?
Yes?
We had a couple of questions come in that I think really were for the previous slide before ESG, when you were talking about it, and I thought now would be a good time. One of those questions is that this document frequently references infrastructure. And so the question is, could you explain what all is included in infrastructure?
Sure. Under the, let me move the slide back. So infrastructure is covered by CDBG funds. And when we say public facilities and infrastructure, you know, that's for, we're talking about an improvement or expansion of publicly-owned facilities and infrastructure that serve the general population or what's called a special needs population, like domestic violence victims, people experiencing homelessness, people with substance abuse issues. And when I say expansion and improvements, that's really, these funds are absolutely not meant for maintenance. So I wanted to, I'm really glad that you asked that because a lot of, you'll notice so many people answered Fix the Roads on our survey, that it merited its own category. We can't cover general maintenance, but what we can do is make sure that we're adding a new element of infrastructure, either brand-new infrastructure or making it more accessible or expanding it. So anything that is in the public domain or run by nonprofit that is open to the general public is considered infrastructure. And I hope that answered your question?
And there was one other question, which is, can you define affordable housing? What is the rent range for an affordable housing unit?
Yes, I will take, I'll answer that. And if I didn't answer it, in a complete way, we've got our boss, Steve Posing, out here, who can add to that and talk about it in the greater landscape of what, you know, what affordable means in the community. But for the purposes of HUD, affordable means that it is affordable, first of all, the beneficiary is for households who make 80% of area median income or less. And affordable means that it is under 30% of, your housing cost would be 30% or below for a family making 80% below. It gets kind of technical fairly quickly, so I'm not sure if there's a better way to describe this. If Steve would like to jump in about affordability and... If Steve would like to jump in about affordability and how that's defined. But for the person who asked that, did that answer the question? Oh, the second part of their question.
Let's see, did that unmute my microphone?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, this is Steve Posey. I'd be happy to expand on that just a little bit. As far as a rent range for affordable housing units, it's really tied to how much people make. And one of the things that we're seeing right now, just to kind of make it real with some numbers, is that folks who are making somewhere between 14, maybe $15 an hour, you know, an affordable apartment for them would be really about $750 to $800 a month. That's, you know, as I think a lot of us know, in Colorado Springs right now, the reality is a little different. We, the the average rent currently here in the city is, I believe it's up to 1150, somewhere right in that range. So that's obviously out of reach for some of those lower wage earning workers. And then a lot of the new apartments that are getting built are really more in the 1400 to $1600 a month range. So those are the conditions that we're looking at across town. Catherine mentioned those units that we expect to see lease up later this year. And a lot of those apartments will be coming online for anywhere from $400 a month for a, you know, a very or extremely low income senior on a fixed income, up to about probably $850 or $900 a month for a bigger household with, you know, maybe two working parents and and a kid. So hopefully that'll provide a little bit more context for that.
And then we have a another housing question. Are there statutory barriers to affordable housing at the state level? I'm not sure if this is about Lytech, but can you expand on that, Steve?
Well, there've been a number of things that have been being discussed at the state level over the last several years. You know, one of them is is liability protection for builders and construction defects. You know, the construction defect laws currently are set up in a way that really does not make it very attractive to build attached condos or townhouse type buildings. And, you know, if that could be straightened out at the state level, I think that that would help bring production of those housing types back into the community in in bigger numbers. We really don't have it. I mean, most of what gets built here in Colorado Springs is either single family detached housing or multifamily apartment buildings. There really isn't a whole lot in between. And that's something that definitely, you know, would be beneficial to every community in Colorado to have that addressed at the state level.
And one thing, I know that it wasn't asked, but, you know, we're talking about affordability ranges, but the thing that is special about these funds, about home funds, is the affordability period offered by these projects. Once, once we have home funds involved in some of these larger projects, those units must be affordable for at least 20 years.
Yeah, that's a great point. And that is a key difference between what I think of as truly affordable rental units and those that just might happen to have a rent that's, you know, I guess what you'd call attainable for a family that's, that's, you know, maybe the wage earning or a little lower income here in the community.
These are really good questions. Yeah, keep them going on the Q and A. We'll keep going and there'll be some more time at the end, but we can also answer as we go along. So with this in mind, you know, it looks, it can look like these plans are pretty much already put together. You might wonder what possible influence your comments or any public engagement can have on these action plans. And I'd like to just, you know, give you the bigger picture of everything that goes into these action plans. Once, for one, we use a ton of public data, census data, labor data, housing data, point in time counts. I mean, so too many indicators to list. So, you know, this is a huge public service. So, you know, that's a form of engagement, answering the census, you know, volunteering with pit counts. This all adds to the the landscape of data that we pull from. We also just have conversations. I mean, all year long, we have consultations with peer agencies, with other departments here at the city, with local nonprofits who are doing the work, you know, accomplishing the goals of our, of our division. We, we try to keep in touch with neighborhood leaders and advocates. And then, of course, we do public engagement like this. We run surveys, polls, direct emails with you. We have public hearings. And then we use a lot of existing plans. We are very aware and we try to avoid, I guess, engagement fatigue. We don't want to have you filling out survey after survey. So we do keep an eye out and we keep our ears to the ground for other current or past planning processes that have used public input. And we use a lot of that. We, we try to make sure that we're aligned with, one, of course, what, what other departments in the city are doing and what other community groups are, are, are doing. So with all this in mind, you know, the needs and the goals, you know, I talk about what role the five year plan has, our needs and our goals are, are fairly baked in during the five year planning process, but the strategies are really an excellent place to start on an annual basis. It's, they're flexible, it's a good place to incorporate public feedback, and it's great for an annual check in. So, you know, I talked about needs and goals. If you would like to go back and look at our five year plan on our website, you'll see, and we mention it several times throughout this document and the executive summary and in other places, everything that we do pretty much needs to fall under these umbrellas. These five priority needs identified in our five year plan, you know, coronavirus or not, these have pretty much stayed the same. So those needs aren't changing and they're pretty large umbrellas. And then as far as our goals, these are pretty aligned with HUD activities that, you know, kind of lanes to play in, so to speak. You know, supportive services for special needs population, vital services for low income households, these are just other ways of saying public services, which is a, you know, a specific CDBG project. But then when we talk about strategies, we can be a lot more nimble with those. So some of the strategies up top are some strategies that we identified in last year's five year planning process. But as a result of the pandemic and all the conversations that we've had with our service providers and and with you all, with neighborhood leaders and and other folks, you know, we, we've been able to add some different strategies to the mix for for our different programs, like economic development, public services and our ESG programs. You know, how do, how do we, instead of, you know, spinning our wheels in the same place, how can we try different things within the same programs that, you know, the lanes that we have to play in? So using ESG dollars to, to work with, to work with landlords. So what we're hearing is, you know, folks may have vouchers or rental assistance money, but we don't have a lot of cooperation in the, in the private housing market. So how can we fix that? How can we prevent evictions? How can we keep people stably housed in the context of a pandemic? So, so yeah, all that to say, we absolutely use your feedback in ways that may not seem as obvious to you while looking at this plan. And like I mentioned, we are very cognizant of of other plans and absolutely of other funds. You know, 2020 was a very strange year and we, we did get quite a bit of CARES Act money, both through HUD and through other federal agencies. There will be some funding coming into the community fairly soon from the Treasury, specifically for rental assistance. The Paycheck Protection Program is, is coming back up. That's a second round coming up this year. So that, we keep that in mind as we roll out our economic development programs. You know, the Emergency Housing Assistance Program, that's hardly the only program coming from state funds, but that's just an example. And then, of course, we try to work with our philanthropic funders here in town to see where they're investing in and how we can, we can make up for those gaps. And then, of course, you know, we try to stay in line with our own plans. Home COS being, sitting at the top of the heap, it's our, our city's Affordable Housing Blueprint that came out of our office too. So a lot of our strategies moving forward also come from, from that plan and from the public process that we conducted through that. So just some next steps. It's January 20th. We have a few more days, a couple more weeks for folks to, you know, take all of this information into consideration and send in any comments that they have on the plan. Nothing is truly baked in, you know, send us your comments, we will respond and make sure that all comments are included in the appendix of our final one and we'll make any adjustments necessary by the time with this has been introduced into council on the 25th and then appears for a second reading on the 9th. There will be technically two more times that you can comment. You, you know, you can go through the city council process, but by that second meeting, we will have incorporated all the planned feedback and have a, a final draft for the city council to approve. And hopefully by that time, we will have heard what our actual budget's going to be from HUD. And that won't really affect our strategy. We're going to adjust everything, either up or down on a pro rata basis. So when that's out, you can just watch our website or sign up for updates to hear back. And then after all this planning, you know, you might wonder why we're planning for 2021 when it's already 2021, but our program year doesn't actually start till April 1st. So that's when we're going to roll out a lot of these activities and start awarding the funds this summer and spring. And then for those sub recipients who receive those funds, they have until March of next year to spend them. So I left a few things out, some fun events and hearing about our annual evaluation report, but I'll leave that for later. So this is just a, just a reminder for you all to get in your comments by the 3rd, either through phone, email, you can even send a letter, however you want. So we've been talking a lot, so I just wanted to open this back up to you all to make sure that you have any questions you, about the presentation or the plan answered. I know that the, we're very well aware that the plan itself is, is, you know, not the easiest read. So if you ever have any questions about, you know, what does this actually mean? If there's one section I should read, what is it? Let us know and we're happy to help answer or incorporate any feedback you might have.
Catherine, we have had a few questions just come in. The first one is, do you have the location or proposed location of the 400 plus apartments being built? So I think those are the ones that are leasing up and I don't know if anyone we have on can answer that off the cuff.
I have the names, but I am going to have to rely on Steve if you have. I'll write them down for tonight.
Steve, is that something you can?
Yeah, actually Catherine, if you can remind me which apartments we're talking about, I can, I can speak to the general location where they are.
Well, I'm guessing they're the ones that were mentioned that we expect to be leasing up in 2021.
Yeah. Don't know if we, we didn't name them in the, in the AP 38. So let me find that.
Yeah, we'll see if we can pull that together.
Yeah, we'll go up to the next one.
In the chat.
They, they will be, I mean, I can say that they will all be advertised in the usual sources for apartment hunters, you know, apartments.com on the internet. If you look, Zillow, I mean, they'll, they'll show up on all of the the usual sites.
So there was a follow up question about that, which is what school districts are those proposed low income housing in? And I wonder if you can share anything about how the process goes to sort of allocate the funding for, or, you know, how, how places get designated?
Oh.
They're actually, you know, when we were evaluating which affordable apartment projects to fund, the only question that we really consider is whether or not there are school districts available in that area or, excuse me, if there are schools available in that area. We really don't spend a lot of time. Oh, excuse me. Other than that, beyond that. And again, you know, if you take a look at the advertising for apartments, you can see which districts they're going to be in.
So those, those apartments were the Ridge, Creekside.
Okay, so the Ridge, Creekside, and then probably the Barnes Apartments?
I believe so.
Yeah, so Creekside and the Barnes Apartments are both located northeast, near Powers. And then the Ridge is located in the southwest, near Academy and South Nevada, Highway 115. So I believe that would be, what, for the one in the southwest, is that District 2? And then the ones in the northeast, I'm sorry, I don't know all of the districts off the top of my head, but would that be District 21?
District 20, probably.
20, okay.
Possibly 38, depending on how far north.
And then Creekside would be D 11, I think.
Creekside, which, I'm drawing a blank on that one.
The Housing Authority one on Fountain.
Oh, yes, that would be D 11. That's correct.
And that, that would be the largest one at 200 and some units.
No, the, the Housing Authority one's only 40.
Oh, 40, okay. Which one is?
The bigger ones are northeast.
Right, okay.
You know, the reality is there were, there are bigger parcels of land, parcels of land that are still available in the northeast. So currently, that's where the bigger projects are getting built.
We are trying to prioritize infill as well. But like you said, the, the bigger projects can be, the bigger projects tend to be out, out yonder. So we have, losing track of the questions, everyone has some.
Well, there's a comment just sort of following on to that, which I think is very well taken, which is that we want families who are who are experiencing low income to really get a good start with kids being able to be in good school districts, which I think, you know, we, my own personal opinion with kids in schools in Colorado Springs is we have some really great school districts here, all over the city, really. But that was a comment.
Well, and, you know, I will add to the, the comment about schools. We are working with D 11 at this moment, or currently on a, what a, I guess, a planning process would be a good way to describe it. Exploring the links between educational outcomes and housing opportunity. And that is through an organization called the Bridges Collaborative. And part of the reason for doing that is exactly what this commenter, you know, has pointed out, that we do have a lot of research that suggests that kids who are able to attend schools in, you know, high-performing districts ultimately do better over the long run. I, I think we have to be somewhat cautious about, you know, as Barb pointed out, we've got terrific school districts all across the city. And we don't want to, you know, penalize one or, or, you know, somehow use school performance as a, I think is a metric for deciding where to locate housing. Because that's really, I mean, there are a couple of, there are a couple of issues with that. One is that right now, land just is not available equally all over town. And in order for us to really maintain a level of production that will help meet the overall housing need here in the region, we have to be pursuing projects pretty much everywhere we can get them. And that's kind of when I, you know, my first comment about, you know, when we look at a project initially, pretty much all we do is identify, is there a place for a kid to go to school? And, and I know that's a really low bar, but that's, that's really the, the question that we have to answer first.
And we have one here. Barriers to affordable housing. The plan offers action items to carry out improvements to the affordable housing stock, including advocating for land use policies more friendly to affordable housing needs by participating in the revision of the housing code. How do you intend to do this and what impact will state legislative proposals, advancing inclusionary zoning at the local level, help advance this goal?
Well, we are in the middle of, you know, the retool COS process, which is basically rewriting the city's land development code. And part of the emphasis there is to simplify the zoning districts across the city. And hopefully to make it easier for a developer to respond to what they want to build to meet the housing needs of our community. You know, right now, we've got some older zoning designations that can be very cumbersome and hard to interpret and are effectively creating some barriers to developers who want to come in and do more modern innovative types of housing product. And if we can succeed with that at the local level, I think that that's going to go a long way toward providing more ways for developers to respond to what people want to buy or what people want to rent. And that's going to be, I think, very, very helpful in the long run. And that's not something that is really governed by the state. You know, the state pretty much leaves land use decisions to local communities. And that's what, you know, that's why we have been so involved with, you know, working with our own planning department on that retool COS effort.
Yeah. And Steve, if I could add to that, just how we can approach some of these different issues from our division, we really want to be educating the community and educating elected leaders about what all of these different tools can do in our community. We're, you know, not the ones who make those, you know, ordinances about zoning and about inclusionary, you know, zoning and things like that. But as a division, we do really want to play a role in making sure that the decision makers have really good information about what options, what kind of impact those different options can have in our community.
And I, I think that's an excellent segue to answer the last question we have on here. Is that what can the public do to promote acceptance of more affordable housing? I think just talking with your neighbors and, and, you know, getting the facts. And we're, we're working on different ways of, of educating neighborhoods on, you know, dispelling myths about, you know, lowering, about affordable housing lowering property rates. I mean, that, that just doesn't happen in Colorado Springs. We haven't seen any property rates lower because of affordable housing being nearby. So I think just learning about these issues and talking to your neighbors and most importantly, you know, not being, providing a lot of supportive voices. Whenever there are affordable housing projects, there are a lot of naysayers, but if we could have some, some boosters, you know, writing into our, our council members, I think that would say a lot.
Yeah, I think we can't overstate how much impact that makes when members, just members of the community are contacting their city council members or other elected leaders to let them know. And it really is true that often, you know, opposition is, comes out where people who support it maybe don't. So I think those who do can make a difference that way.
So we're at 2:00 and we had a couple more, about three more questions that we didn't get a chance to answer, but I just want to make sure people know that we're going to be publishing these Q and As. And for those that we didn't get a chance to answer during this session, we will answer them in writing and publish them before the end of the week. So, yeah, we'll, we'll handle that after the fact. And if you have any follow-up questions, please get in touch. But just in the, to respect everybody's time, I just wanted to thank everyone so much for spending an hour with us on this, especially today when there's other, other national news that you could be paying attention to. And, and I just want to thank all of our colleagues, especially Barb, for putting the survey stuff together and, and for our community development team who is here to support and help us answer questions.
And thank you, Catherine. And also a quick reminder that we are, we have an email newsletter signup on our website as well. So when we have things, new things posted, we'll be emailing them out. You can sign up on our website at Community Development.
Excellent, yes, thank you. Good reminder.
Thank you, Catherine. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
And here's our information. You have until the 3rd. So get those comments in, sign up, and thank you again.